Being six thirty-two, call this meeting of the school committee to order for November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. All members are present and in attendance. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We are here this evening for the purpose of discussion, deliberation, and potentially voting to enter into contract negotiations with a superintendent after two long, intense, but ultimately really pleasant and enjoyable days of superintendent interviews this past week. Before we sort of jump into the process, I do, as I said to you guys before, I do have a list of folks that I think I and we as a committee would like to offer our thanks and appreciation to, because this is a process that started in May?
Yeah.
And has taken us weeks and weeks and months and months and hours and hours to get to this point. And so I'm going to start with a huge thanks and appreciation to Jen and to Andrea Stern Armstrong, our director of human resources, who sort of co-chaired and co-led this effort. You know, we, I think, as the committee have seen just how much time and effort goes into this process. And for folks not completely engaged in this, this was, this was no small task. This was honestly hours and hours of work behind the scenes. And we, we would not have, have gotten to this point as seamlessly as we did if it weren't for you both. So thank you very much to our friends from MASC for guiding and ushering and shepherding and leading us through this process for, you know, the advice. I know that this is not an easy process to go through, and you guys made it a lot easier for us. So we appreciate all the work that you put in. To the screening committee, who, because the screening was conducted in executive session, we won't name by name, but there were a number of folks who were involved in sort of vetting these candidates and getting us a list of finalists several meetings, multiple days. And so thank you again for all the effort that went into that. To the building leaders, who, you know, opened up their buildings and their teams and their staffs to tours for two days and, you know, really showed and conveyed how important these, how important the folks in Wilmington and our teachers and our staff are to our students. And we heard from all three of the candidates how, how clearly that came across. So thank you for, for allowing us to bring those candidates to the buildings. Also, of course, to the teachers and staff who welcomed candidates into their classrooms and really sort of highlighted the good work that's being done. All the members of the community who engaged in this process, whether it was, "Good bless you," whether it was taking surveys or joining the candidates for sort of meet and greets. It's, it's really important that, that we get that feedback and we appreciate that. I want to thank you guys on the committee for, for just the level of engagement and professionalism in this process. I mean, I, we have said all the way along that this, we are fortunate to, to serve with each other, and I really appreciate everything you guys have done in this process. And lastly, and certainly not least, I want to thank the candidates. We have three really wonderful applicants and finalists for this role, and they spent twelve-hour days with us and really made the process on our end enjoyable. So that's my list. Did I forget anyone? Please.
I would just add the central office team for doing some of the hosting and
Absolutely.
navigating and a few of the focus groups.
And good catch, Mr. Turner.
Last one, our help from WCTV and the folks for getting videos and things ready and out there as well.
Yeah, WCTV and the, and the IT staff here.
The IT staff, both those two groups.
Absolutely. Great. So just as sort of a brief recap to like what got us to this point, obviously the engagement of all the folks that we just thanked, right? But, you know, members of the committee and folks at home will recall that in the spring, we hired an interim superintendent and then pretty shortly thereafter began the process of searching for and hiring a permanent superintendent. We engaged our friends from MASC. We put out and gathered feedback through a community survey of what folks felt they were looking for in the next superintendent, right? I actually went back and looked at it and just, I think it's important to sort of refresh and remind ourselves what, as we got into this process, what we felt was sort of the most important things we were looking for. And it was somebody who can advocate for students and for staff, communications, management, honesty and integrity, and a commitment to student well-being. And so I think as we think about, consider where we're at, I think it's, it's helpful to sort of frame it in, remember those terms. So through that, we worked with, obviously, the screening, the Jen and Andrea worked with MASC, formed the screening committee. We had, correct me if I'm wrong, seventeen applicants that were sort of screened down to seven candidates that were interviewed, three finalists, and those are the finalists we met, correct? All right. So, all of that brings us here. We had two great days last week, three great candidates. Everybody got a chance to meet, to engage, to ask some great questions. And so I think what we'll do is go around the table. We, you know, I, I think sort of a couple of points, right? Highlights of what you saw that you liked from the candidates? And if you're comfortable at the time, either a top choice or a top two would be, would be great. So kicking us off, Dr. McCalli.
Thank you. I get to go first. Awesome. Yeah, so I just want to say to everyone, I really enjoyed meeting all the candidates, and I actually found all three to be very strong candidates. They all brought different perspectives and strengths to us, and I do look forward to hearing my colleagues' thoughts, too. I know I'm going first, but I do want to hear all your thoughts as well. Jesse did a great job thanking everyone. I also want to thank everyone who helped out with this whole entire process, and also those who gave community feedback as well, too. That was very valuable when looking through that. So I'm just going to go in the order of how the candidates interviewed, so chronologically.
Sure.
So I'll start with Dr. Haynes. I felt Dr. Haynes was a strong all-around candidate. She gave very clear answers to the questions, and I liked her ideas that she shared with the committee. In particular, I was impressed with her thoughts on how to handle the new Northside School Building. She laid out a very articulate and comprehensive plan that put the students, parents, and community at the forefront. I love how she wanted to tie in the project to the curriculum, too, like have the kids be part of the construction project. I thought that was pretty good. Other strengths I noticed from Dr. Haynes was how she appeared to be strong on fiscal management, education services, and policy. With fiscal management, she had significant experience working in places with tight budgets. I did like her answer on navigating the budget process as well. I was also impressed with her example she gave on improving math scores in the district and how she was able to systematically identify how algebra was being taught was then a root cause of why math scores were low, and then implemented a plan to change how algebra was taught, and then the math scores went up. I thought that was pretty great. Through her interview, she appeared to be someone who is a no-nonsense, get-things-done personality that can work well with others. All great attributes for a district leader. Let's move on to Dr. Kwong. I like Dr. Kwong as well. She was the most experienced out of all the candidates at the superintendent level, of being the superintendent at Methuen for many years. She had to lead a district that was continuously in a lot of financial duress, and she was able to do that really well with her, and she did the best she could with the resources she had, really clever ways around how to get kids the services they need when you're in that constrained environment, was, I thought, very impressive. I did like her approach towards personnel management and how she was able to help grow teachers and administrators. She gave some really nice answers with that. She was a big advocate of following the DESI system in order to do this. She also gave a very strong answer on using strategic planning to deliver results for the district. She was very data-driven and used the data to then inform how to make changes in the district, which I appreciated as well. She is a proven leader, and she also be, will be able to get on board very quickly within WPS because of her experience. Lastly, talk about Mr. Poska. I enjoyed speaking with him as well. He gave very direct and concise answers to the questions. He came across as a very strong communicator, and that theme came up again in the responses, as he was a strong proponent of constant and effective communication to help get things done. He was, he was very clearly student-first in his mentality and his responses as well. He struck me as someone who would be very visible in the district and proactively address issues when they arise. He's an experienced administrator and appeared to be very comfortable on the operations side of the business. So with this, I am going to recommend Dr. Haynes for Wilmington. I think any of the candidates will be good in this role. I'm recommending Dr. Haynes because of her demonstrated high-level thinking, proven ability to execute, calm demeanor, and focus on education. She is all-around strong candidate, and I hope others on the committee see my viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCalli. Ms. Lord.
Well, we are in a great position of having three terrific candidates. It reminds me of when we, my son and I watch America's Got Talent, and there's so many great acts, but in the end, you have to narrow down and choose one finalist. So it's a good position to be in. All three had strong backgrounds and education in multiple positions. They all came across as respectful and well-respected by the people that they work with. So I'll begin by talking about Mr. Matthew Poska. I had the chance to tour the buildings with him. He came across as positive, friendly, I feel like kind of that coach-like vibe of supporting his administrators and teachers as well, this tone of, you know, we're all in this together, we're doing great, let's celebrate our successes, and just think about how we can improve a little bit. What can we just do a little bit better? Was a theme that, that I felt from him, and just looking at how we can collaborate, and, but always, you know, creating that positive atmosphere, but it's still encouraging everyone to do a little bit better each time. Dr. Patricia Haynes came across to me as a very, you know, warm, friendly demeanor, very welcoming. I think she would be an excellent collaborator that would create that atmosphere that where people feel comfortable speaking up and working together for the best. And she had a lot of really strong ideas. I thought she had some great specific ideas on education when we asked questions. A couple of the things I appreciated, the math turnaround was definitely noteworthy. That was great to hear that, because changing instruction from traditional to something more like that is a big shift for teachers. So to be able to lead that, I think, as, you know, shows some significant leadership abilities in instruction. I appreciated how she talked about recruiting teachers and providing the training that they needed to provide, that effective instruction is so important, an emphasis on growth mindset for how we move students, you know, really taking them from where they are to what that next step is. I thought she seemed like a very clear communicator with a lot of very well-thought-out plans of how, you know, she would execute different things. And similarly, one of the things that stood out to me in particular was her ideas with the, with the north and the new building. You know, my son will be one of the many that will be there for the two years. So to think of it actually as a value add, you know, what can we get out of actually an educational experience of this happening rather than, you know, a drag on, on the situation? So that, I really appreciated those ideas. And then Dr. Brandi Kwong also was exceptionally knowledgeable about all the responsibilities of being a superintendent, being the one that has been in that role, a strong focus on the quality instruction and the difference that makes for students, emphasis on positive communication. I felt the communication was a theme, and I think that kind of came through, that this is a role that she's been in. And so the thoughtfulness and experience of how important it is to communicate effectively to different roles, what, you know, based on what their group is and what information they need to have. Looking at teacher evaluation as a means of celebrating success and supporting teacher well-being, that emphasis on listening, acknowledging, you know, and really being a team player. And one of the answers she gave that stood out to me, too, was when we asked her about special education, and she brought up that the special education teacher shortage and really crisis, which I personally, as someone who works as a special education consultant, has felt like is one of the biggest threats to education for the past many years, that I think a lot of the general public isn't really aware of. And our ability to provide effective instruction for students is dependent on whether we can even hire people to do that. So the, her recognition of that problem and the need to advocate for it on a state level, I thought, showed a deep understanding of the situation and how, the level to which it needs to be solved. It's beyond what individual districts can address. And so I appreciated her awareness and response to that question. So my, overall, I'll give my, my top two recommendations. I think both Dr. Haynes and Dr. Kwong would be my top two. I think both are excellent candidates and would both be terrific in the position between those two. My, my top recommendation would be for Dr. Kwong based on the level of experience she has. She's the only person who has been in this role already and also been in Massachusetts and is local. So I feel like all those things give her a level of experience that she could come in and immediately be able to lead and know what's going on, you know, and really how to navigate situations. I think, you know, the, I actually have a contact in the district that, you know, someone there that I reached out to, because I, we were always curious, like, why is someone changing, right? And so to get a better sense of the situation, and so from everything I can understand, you know, there's some significant challenges there that she handled as well as anyone possibly could, I think, and has maintained a very professional relationship, very respectful, you know, navigated things really well. And so it feels like a, you know, a rare opportunity to actually have somebody come here who's already been through the learning curve of being a superintendent and gone through some significant challenges and learned from them, and then able to step in with that experience, you know, ready to, to lead in that position.
Thank you very much. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wow, those are really two tough digressions to follow. Very well put together, so credit to you guys. I'm not feeling my physical best, so I'm not going to be as maybe involved or as detailed, but I really appreciate my colleagues have noted some of the things I've also noted in these candidates. I'll refer to them as well as kind of highlights. So during this process, I've kind of taken note of there being kind of archetypal categories to fit these candidates in, in my mind, which has been really helpful, kind of whether, whether it's a focus on, on kind of inspiration or communication and kind of district management or kind of curriculum-focused aspects of the job. You know, to me, when I've been thinking about this, I've been thinking about who is going to best help us raise the standard, because I think over the last couple of years, we've had a lot of progress in the district on a couple of really important areas. And so who now, how can we then raise our eyes even higher to, to reach like an exceptional level in the various metrics we, we measure our district on? You know, I think all three of these candidates would be great. I think I agree that, I was really, really impressed and really grateful to search committee and to the whole process to give us these candidates, because it's a, it's a tough decision, but racking the brain, I think that's why I have a headache, is because trying to run through this. So I'll start with Dr. Haynes. You know, as my colleague said, the, the story that she was able to share about improving math scores in the district was, was very impressive. I very much like the detail she offered with the North School Project. I think specifically kind of immediately cluing into what is that going to mean for recess? What is this going to mean for the physical safety of the children on the site? Because obviously, there's going to be a lot of trucks, there's going to be a lot of to-do there. That mattered a lot to me. You know, for, for Dr. Kwong, I thought her answer on special education, similarly, you know, we know that's something we're facing right now, is, is navigating kind of staffing issues on that front, and I've heard from parents about that. And so that, to me, really rung true, that, that she would point that out, and I really liked her answer on that. And then Mr. Poska, I was very impressed with when we asked, one of the last questions in the interview was about the mental health of staff. How do you support staff? And he, he was saying that in Nashua, they had worked on kind of materially trying to find housing, trying to support teachers get actual, like, material support, which I thought was great. I, kudos to him and to the folks there working on that, because it is more and more difficult these days to afford to do this critical work. So, bearing all that in mind, again, like, how do we raise the standards, you know, in our district? How do we reach and aim higher? I think that can't just be academic and needs to include the whole student. All that being said, however, and I'm sure we'll talk about much more of this in the next thirty, forty hours plus, my top two candidates are Doctors Haynes and Kwong as well. I found both of them to be really great fits, very impressed with their interviews, with their references. For me, I'm, I'm very, it's very close. That's part of the split in my head. So I'm looking forward to hearing more from my colleagues about the two of them. Yeah, I'll leave it at that and let someone else go. I talk way more than I thought I would, which is, should not be surprised by.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Mr. Ragsdale?
Thank you. So as everyone has said, but I think we're going to, in certain areas, be repeating each other all through, all through the night in certain things. So I, I want to begin by saying I believe that all of these candidates are very strong, and that we had strong applicants to begin with, and the screening committee forwarded strong finalists to us. And I think that all of these candidates are ready to be superintendent in Wilmington and would be successful here, and I regret we can't choose all of them. Although a superintendent triumvirate would probably not work very well, so we have to, we have to choose. I also want to emphasize the breadth of the things that we're looking at in making this decision, because of course, as the school committee, we're looking at as much information as we, as we can. So it begins with their applications and their resumes and their written recommendations. We have also spent time with them during their days in the district, some of us shepherding them around from school to school, all of us kind of, you know, having dinner with them before their interviews. Many of us have watched some of their school committee meetings, and we've reviewed all the survey feedback that community members and administrators and teachers have provided to us from the meet and greets and also from their time touring the buildings. And then, of course, we had their interviews last week. So we're looking at a lot of data, and I don't think I mentioned the references. We also called their references and talked to their, talked to their references and, and shared the notes from that. So we're, we looked, you know, looking as far as we can into a lot of different areas, getting feedback, you know, not just from our own firsthand impressions, but other people's impressions as well throughout the district. And again, all of the information that, that we looked at leads us, or at least leads me, to really believe that these are all good candidates. Again, a few words about each of them. For Dr. Haynes, I felt that she is very strong with curriculum and very strong in relationship building, that she seemed very student-forward in a lot of the information, both from recommendations and references as well as her interview. I think that her, her understanding in some ways of the building project and some of the implications of it was maybe the, maybe the deepest. I think she really had a grasp on many of the, many of the issues that just need to be thought about and considered, both from communication, but also just kind of all the different sides, from the parent side and the, the staff side and students as well, and all the preparation and planning that needs to go into this process over the next two years as we get ready to move into that building. Dr. Kwong is an experienced superintendent. From everything that I've gathered from, you know, speaking to people and, you know, looking at her recommendations and so forth, that she is an extremely hard worker with, you know, cares a tremendous amount about her district, and has really been kind of a systemic thinker about improvement in her district, and obviously has the most experience of all of these candidates, being a longtime sitting superintendent in Massachusetts, and would, you know, would therefore, in that sense, you know, you know, be able to step most easily into the actual role of superintendent, knows, knows what that means to be a superintendent in Massachusetts. And for Mr. Poska, I believe that, I thought noted that he was very strong in, I think, operations while also, you know, also understanding the curricular side, strong experience in Massachusetts as a principal, so also understands the Massachusetts education landscape. And I particularly noted that I really think he gave just again and again, very thoughtful and direct answers to the questions in the interview. I think that, you know, everyone produced a good interview, but I think that, I think that Mr. Poska's interview was really notable by kind of, you know, direct, straightforward answers to the questions, but then, again, thoughtful replies that really sometimes went into just areas that I wasn't necessarily expecting and was, you know, consistently surprised at, just like, ooh, that's a really interesting thought, that's a good way to put it. And demonstrating, I think, his, you know, his thoughtfulness and experience in education as well. These are all longtime career-experienced educators, and so we have a lot of experience in the room. As I said, I think that all of these people are ready to be superintendent in Wilmington. Hard to make choices, but I think that my top two choices that I'm sort of still trying to think between are Mr. Poska and Dr. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Mr. Turner, I'll give you a chance to finish typing, and then you are up.
Yeah, clearly, I'm going to have to watch the video after to add, add a bit more to there. I'm, I'm getting there, but there's a few blank spots.
I'm sure you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's on my resume. So, thank you all very much. I, again, to reiterate, because it's worth saying, it's, one of the things I really enjoy about this process is getting to listen to amazing educators. And all these folks have been doing this for twenty-five to thirty-plus years, and they've all had really interesting experiences, and they've all gave us things we to think about. There are all, there were moments in all the interviews and all the, the different parts of the visit where you'd, you'd say, okay, that's something to stay for later, that's an idea, that's an interesting topic. I did have the benefit of, of being the tour guide for one of the candidates, Dr. Kwong, during a few of the school visits, which was also a very good experience to be with somebody from outside the district in our buildings, get seeing their interaction with our buildings and, and how much they were impressed with our schools and our building leaders. That's fantastic. I mean, we all think we're doing a good job. We all think Wilmington Public Schools are good, but to get some external validation is always nice, and that was certainly part of the process. I think all three of the candidates said that to us during the interview process as well. And, and for all three of them, there's kind of a summary bit, and I'm, I'm going to probably try not to, I'll try to be brief, Paul. I'm going to try not to repeat too much of what all of you said. There's a lot of things they do have in common, because they have had some similar sorts of experiences. So I, I won't go into diesels on those. But specific from my perspective to Dr. Haynes, her work on curriculum improvement, as noted, was very, very good. Her strong focus in the fact that she wanted to go back to building safety, it's something we spent a good amount of time on in the last couple of years, talking about building safety and the age of our buildings and what that constraints that puts on building safety, but also the opportunity with the new building. The fact that she was really clear that she links the strategic plan, both the budget and available data, and bringing those two pieces together was very, very good, and, and I, I thought a really helpful answer. She, one of the things that really struck me with Dr. Haynes was she is the only one of our group who, she's taught kindergarten, she's taught in the elementary school, she's worked in the middle school level, she's been a district leader, she has kind of this really wide breadth of experiences, which was very impressive and unique for our candidates. Specific to Mr. Poska, his energy and enthusiasm was certainly clear. His work on the middle school level is very, very helpful to us. We've made some great progress with our middle school, but we need to do more. That's, that's where we're, we're wanting to see a lot more improvements, and so I think that he would help us with that. Certainly his work with grants and district-wide projects was very, were highlights. And then for both the above, I did spend some time with, with school committee meetings, both the above, in their current role, there's not a lot in the school committee meeting setting for them. So I'm going to set that aside, but it's, it's relevant when I get down to Dr. Kwong. She clearly has done the job. She's done it in a wide variety of experiences, as she kind of phrased before, during and after COVID, which is really three phases of her experience there. No doubt that her time to impact our district would be quicker. She's from, she's in Massachusetts now, she's been a superintendent. Her work on getting a building purchased and made fit for purpose is something that is hard to imagine. I mean, we talked briefly about investing in a building in Tewksbury when we had to find a spot for the Wildwood, and the, the level of complexity that involved made people's heads just kind of explode, and we walked away and said, okay, we're going to find a better solution somewhere else, which involved where we landed, which, so the fact that she was able to accomplish that is pretty impressive, especially considering what we, we understand about some of the challenges in, in Methuen. She clearly understands navigating complex topics. I spent a lot of time on their school committee meetings. It's, and, and this goes to some of the questions raised when you have a sitting superintendent. You get more public information about them, and so I wanted to understand the reality of that public situation. She, I'll just say, I can understand why she feels the need to leave. It's pretty clear. That said, when she had the meeting where they discussed she was resigning, they went around the room, some of them, and made comments about her. And what was most interesting about that was a lot of the comments were really similar to the things we said about Dr. Brand when he left. They talked about her strengths, they, they ticked through some of the initiatives she had accomplished in the, in the eight years she was there, the fact that their district was in a really different place before and than where it is now, and it's, it is in a better spot, all other things aside. So they talked about instituting the new, the science of reading and the curriculum, shifting the district to data-driven approach, managing the COVID crisis with both flexibility and compassion. And then she grew as a leader there. And then I did a reference call with the MEA, their Educational Association president for most of the time she was there. And he acknowledged and said, you know, when she started, she was more rigid in her thinking. But over the six years he worked with her, she became more flexible and started to listen more and started to work more collaboratively with the teachers during that time. And he was very impressed with the shift in her ability as a And he was very impressed with the shift in her ability as a leader. And so, at the end of it, he did get to the point where, yeah, she was somebody that we could work with, he met with her weekly on recurring and talked to her almost daily, they were able to head off issues before they became big. So that spoke a lot to me, was, was getting that level of feedback. And then, when I think about what we're looking for, we want to align with the momentum Dr. Brand built, we want to focus on student and teacher well-being, being ready to learn and ready to teach, and working together to help students reach their potential, their best selves, supporting the DLT with two distinct groups. We've got the group that's really seasoned, excellent in their role, they've been there a long time. That group, they need somebody to connect with them, listen to them, and give them the space to grow in the ways they want to grow. The other group is newer people in their roles, and somebody who has the knowledge of what their roles entail and connect, and, and being able to mentor them, to guide them in those new roles. And then the last two things are the building project, protecting the educational programming, and communicating with all the stakeholders and helping the North during construction, and managing the budget as a way that aligns with our strategic plan, communicating the talent, our educational priorities, and keeping us in good financial standing. I guess that wasn't brief, Paul. So all of that said, I, I do think the, the energy and the enthusiasm of somebody like Mr., I, I, I think Dr. Haynes would be very, very good. I, I, I'm a little concerned about the fact that there isn't direct Massachusetts experience. That does stick with me a little bit, and so she's good, I think she would be a great superintendent. I don't have any concerns here or somewhere else. I think Mr. Poska, his enthusiasm and some of his, his, his large-scale thinking and ideas would be really, really good for the district. I think he would also be a very good superintendent here. My first thought, though, I, my first thought that would be with Dr. Quong, in part because we're gonna have a year where we're making a bit less progress, just the nature of interim, and part of what we asked him to do was keep the ship floating in the right same direction, and not really make a lot of changes, that was part of what we asked. If we have somebody who hasn't been a superintendent before, and there's a learning curve on that, and for one of them, there'd be a learning curve on Massachusetts as well, we would, I feel like there's a risk of losing the momentum we built over those seven years we had Dr. Brand. And so that's the piece that I'm concerned with, and they, it, it could be the wrong answer, to be fair, because we could get to three years down the line, and somebody with the energy and, and the new ideas of, of either Dr. Haynes or Mr. Poska particularly could be really the best answer. And so maybe I'm being too safe, but helping us and hitting the ground running where, she's got to learn a lot about Wilmington, and she's got to learn and, and be, be ready to listen to and engage with and support the leaders who are here, that we know we have good leaders. But she doesn't have to learn how to be a superintendent, she doesn't have to learn Massachusetts, and she's clearly, there's nothing, basically nothing that would happen here that she wouldn't have had some similar sort of experience with already, and that gives me a lot of comfort. And maybe, maybe I'm being too risk averse on that, but that's, that's where I land with that. Sorry, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Dr. Bryson.
All right. Okay, so I won't repeat, the candidate pool was strong, all of that. I will say that across the group, I thought the candidates articulated a clear commitment to equity, continuous school improvement, data-driven instruction, all of those things that we were looking for. Overall, the search yielded multiple individuals, obviously, whose qualifications and disposition aligned well with our priorities and the strategic direction of Wilmington. When reviewing my notes on both the district visits and interviews, the references, the feedback from the community, I returned to the initial survey to stakeholders about what they were looking for when we developed the job description. I think it's important, and as I went through my notes over the past few days, I grounded my notes in those particular stakeholder feedback themes, which were, as Jessie mentioned earlier, but advocate for students, advocate for staff, communication, management, honesty and integrity, and commitment to student well-being. So I picked just relationships advocacy for students and staff, and I sort of organized my feedback in that way. So I didn't pull them apart, I just kind of blended it all together. So in relationships, I say, all three candidates spoke about visibility, availability, listening and learning. I would highlight sort of like the themes throughout my notes, and that came up again and again. I appreciated Dr. Quong's response about needing to see the classrooms, to get in there firsthand, to support administration in that way. Dr. Haynes also discussed listening and learning and collaborating with staff, being in those spaces, and Mr. Poska shared that he will be visible, also visiting classrooms and being embedded in the community. He described himself as solutions-oriented year-round, this idea that he's always searching for sort of those bigger solutions to any issues that he would see either come from those visits or from supporting his staff. In advocacy for students, I'll start with Mr. Poska, made mention many times about putting students first. I thought that this was a pretty, like, a theme throughout everything with his day and the visits. I appreciated his discussion of belief and faith in students and his example of the adult ed program. He pushed back on that one-size-fits-all approach. I thought he described his experience with AMLE, equity and grading, MTSS, and PBIS in various ways in response to multiple questions. So I saw that in a response to mental health and well-being, I saw that in his response to special education. Dr. Quon also discussed the importance of educating and advocating for students, especially our special education population, and made mention of legislation and having deep conversations with legislators. Dr. Haynes spoke about programs, training, and described a student-centered approach, especially in reference to the middle school AMLE program review. And finally, in advocate for staff, I'll start with Dr. Haynes, discussed providing continued PD and support for staff, and talked about appreciating staff by stepping in for them, providing wellness activities, and then she gave some specific examples. Dr. Quon shared her expertise with the evaluation system and described a thorough mentoring and coaching model. She too discussed wellness and appreciation for staff in that final question by Mr. Turner. And then Mr. Poska began by talking about relationships and trust, being visible, consistent, providing an ongoing evaluation process that embraced opportunities to grow, followed up by referencing his teaching experiences and to never forget what it's like to be in the classroom. He also described joy, authenticity, listening to concerns of teachers, and then described how he would work with his teams to develop solutions, such as his example of affordable housing and childcare. And I say, while these are big ideas, I appreciated his ability to showcase his solution-oriented approach and his vision to sometimes try to do things a little bit differently to meet the needs of our staff. So while all three of them, I think, are highly qualified for this position and would really do well in Wilmington, my top two are Dr. Quong and Mr. Poska.
Excellent, thank you.
And that's to you, Mr. Fenely.
So I, I kind of went in two separate directions on this. I started sort of thinking and approaching this from the place of the, sort of the interview question responses, right? And I think you guys, the beauty of going last is that you guys have said quite literally everything that I have written down. I really liked Dr. Haynes's approach to safety, right? She talked about safety as the physical safety of the building, but also the physical and like mental emotional safety of the children, which I thought was, was a really sort of nice way of framing, that safety is not just one sort of thing. Dr. Quong, obviously, you know, a current superintendent, has been in her district for a long time, and, you know, having had a superintendent that had been here for several years, I appreciate that sort of stability in that tenure, right? So that was, that was a, a high point for me, and, you know, she talked about aligning budgets and strategic plans and priorities, which I really liked. Excuse me. Mr. Poska had some, some, some great answers as well. You know, he was one of the, the few that talked about sort of engaging with the town. He talked about the police department, the fire department, town hall, right? We, as a committee and with the superintendent, have done a really, really good job of engaging and working with our partners in the town, and I, I think that's, that's a really important component to this. He mentioned, he was talking about sort of evaluating successes, and he talked about it as a collage rather than a point in time, which, you know, you're gonna have some successes, you're gonna have some challenges, and to be able to sort of work in the whole picture, I think, is, is really important. And I liked that his answers were sort of student-first, but he came at it with this kind of coaching mindset, right? He talked about his experiences as a coach several times, which I really liked. So I, I started sort of my thoughts, my review from that point, and then I think, as we talked about a little bit, I came back to the original survey, the what is the community looking for, what are we looking for? And while I think all of the candidates are strong, I think all of the candidates have experience and check these boxes, for me, looking at this, this original survey and taking it as a whole, I think Mr. Poska sort of stood out the most for me, and then probably followed second by Dr. Quong. So that's kind of, those are my top, top two at the moment, so. That said...
I was gonna add some...
Please. No, no, nope, nope. Go ahead.
I just wanted, so one of the other things I did, and it might be a helpful exercise for us, because it does seem like there is an obvious consensus, right? So we're probably gonna need to dig a little deeper. But what I did then do, and I think this is a, it's a good problem to have, it means that we had three really strong candidates. And so I don't think that we should be overly worried about that, I just think that we're all coming in looking at this from a different perspective. But what I did then do was go back to the strategic plan and looked at our objectives, and looked at what the superintendent would be responsible for. And there actually aren't that many in the, the next year and a two years, that the superintendent is sort of listed as the point person. The one that the person is listed for is strategic objective two, caring and safe for all, which is foster school communities where all students and staff experience a sense of belonging and safety. 2.5 says, develop a multi-year school safety improvement plan for all schools, regularly assess and update safety protocols to ensure a physically safe environment for students and staff. And I went back to my notes, and I was sort of like, okay, where do I have evidence that this was happening? I happened to do one of the reference calls for Mr. Poska with, he had listed the police chief in Nashua, Kevin Rourke, and so, but that was important when I was thinking about this particular objective, I was like, ooh, that's interesting. So Kevin Rourke says, importantly, I think, he sort of started the police partnership, which I feel like there's a lot of these themes, and what I'm reading in some of the reference checks and those recommendation letters was, he started this, which I think then goes to this, the big ideas, the solution-oriented, like, there's an issue, how am I gonna solve it? And so, in this, in Nashua, he started the police partnership, he was at the forefront of a police explorer program. He described him as seeing the bigger picture, which again, I feel like is what I've noted all along, sort of, I'll write things like vision, big idea, like, I think, so if, if that's something that's important to people, I think that's, like, oh, I need to highlight that. So clearly for me, as a school committee member, that's sort of an important piece of what I was looking for. Very present, visible, what you see is what you get, which kind of then brings me back to that authenticity and trust, right? There's no, it's just, who you met is who you met. And I was like, okay, so I took a note of that. And then, like, above and beyond, helpful, supportive, prompt, responsive. But the part that I really highlighted was this police partnership, and sort of the fact that this was someone listed, showed to me that this was gonna be a real area of strength for him. So despite, so I kind of was back and forth between the, so much experience as a superintendent, doesn't have the experience as a superintendent, but what experience do we need? And I was like, well, according to our strategic plan, this is an area that we really do need. Who do I think demonstrates kind of the greatest readiness for that task? And so that was another reason where, I think, why Matt Poska ended in my, like, my top, maybe my top, top, but I'm, I'm still, like many of you, kind of, I'm very happy we're doing kind of like our two, because I feel like that's a better place for me to sit, to not say, it is this person, that's it. I feel like I, I have to listen to kind of everyone else's perspectives on it to help me come to that final decision.
Sure.
So now it's back to you, my friend.
Yeah, this is, it, this is, I think, a good place to be in, though challenging, because we do, we do seem to be pretty, pretty evenly split, right? There is no, there's no either clear consensus, nor is there a clear, like, what's the opposite of consensus, right? Like, I...
It's just, yeah, we couldn't easily sort of eliminate somebody from, from consideration, so.
I'm always happy to keep talking, like many of us are.
Please do, maybe you'll spur something.
Yeah, so, you know, it's interesting talking about Mr. Poska. I, I hear about this coordination with the police department, and I think, how much does that really relate to the district's purpose, right? That strikes me as someone who's, that's almost two outside the box, like, what, what goal are we serving by, by creating this relationship by, with the police department? And is that kind of, is that putting mental energy into something that really doesn't at the end of the day prove to as efficiently serve the student population, right? Like, during our interview process, I was much more focused or clued in on, all right, but at the end of the day, what are we really doing in the classroom? Like, what, what really is happening there? And every time we diverted from that, I got a little bit disappointed, for lack of a better word. You know, I, I, I thought, a, a great communicator, truly great communicator, but, you know, but again, I, I think sometimes what one might see as a direct and straightforward answer, others might take as insufficient or lacking detail, which frankly is how I felt. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other additional thoughts they want to share?
Just thinking about, yeah, what thoughts could be helpful, and as we try to navigate this, you know, I just want to read, also, like everybody, we read all the references, spoke to references, read all the community feedbacks, I just want everyone to know, like, we're taking a lot into consideration. I would say the references I spoke to for all three were terrific, very positive. Similar to what Mr. Golden just said, that was something that struck me as well, and as someone, you know, works in education, to hear specific ideas about how problems would be tackled, I think all three create a positive atmosphere and had a lot of really, you know, all three felt supportive of equity of teachers, of all that, but to go to the next level of really having insight and ideas and plans for what specific things we could do and how to navigate them, I thought was important, and so that stood out to me as well, for, you know, the two candidates, both of them that I, kind of are my top two. And then, you know, just for me, between that, both Dr. Haynes and Dr. Quong, to me, gave the best guidance for that. I think they're both would be fantastic. The main difference for me in that is that one has not been in Massachusetts at all or in the role, one has been in the role and in Massachusetts and very local and has relationships, and so I just think, for both, and I, I spoke to, for her, a reference that is, you know, in the school system and has worked with her closely and was incredibly positive about how the parents feel, about how the teachers feel, the administration, and, you know, what's been a challenging situation, but how hard she works on, for everything, you know, and for the, on behalf of the kids, too, bringing in free programs, to provide things, so, you know, it just seems like there's a lot of support. So that, to me, was all really important to hear, right? Because we're going on someone who's been in this role, and how has it actually felt to the people there? So those were some of the things that really stood out to me for, in one of making my recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Doctor McCalli.
Sure. Kind of a question for a few people, because this came up in some of the themes.
Sure.
How do I say this? How much value is it that you are a superintendent of work administration in Massachusetts versus New Hampshire, right? And is the difference is something that can be learned in a couple months, or are these systemic things that take years to really understand what's going on, right? So one thing I kind of hearing is, you know, you know, I, I think Dr. Quong has the experience, where I would caution is relying on experience. She has a lot of other great qualities, for sure, but what I would caution against is thinking, well, because she has the experience, therefore the other people don't, she's better equipped for the job. But what I think I would want to hear, though, is, is Massachusetts education really, when you get to the core of teaching students, much different? Or is it more, people just have to understand different policies and they'll get up to speed in like six months? Did I follow what I'm saying with that?
Well, and I would say, and I'll defer either to Dr. Bryson or phone a friend, but I would suspect and suggest that these folks wouldn't have been put forward as finalists if their qualifications and/or licenses weren't either appropriate or, you know, easily transferable or, like, I think there's enough similarities between what New Hampshire requires and what Massachusetts requires to make it not negligible, but not a concern. Am I sort of framing what the screening committee?
Yeah, I agree, and I think that's what M.A.S.E. would repeat. And the other thing I'll just add in, which isn't necessarily helpful, but I think that something I enjoyed from listening to... but I think that something I enjoyed from listening to someone in another state was actually how they addressed things that, like policy, for example. I, I really appreciated how New Hampshire sort of organizes the way they think about policy and who's involved in that and how, how very organized it is. And I think that that can actually be value added, right? Because you're thinking of it in terms of, that's not, that's not how we do it here, but it doesn't mean that that's not how we, we couldn't do it in, in Wilmington, based on that experience. So I think sometimes it's okay to sort of make that crossover. And I think the frameworks and all of that are, are different but similar.
Sure.
Does that address your question?
Uh, yeah, I think.
Mr. Exel.
That's something that I thought about as well, in terms of, do you have, like, do you know the Massachusetts education landscape? But I would, I would have more, first of all, for example, Mr. Poska does know that. So that's something that's worth noting is that even though he's in New Hampshire now, that he's been in Saugus, he's been in Beverly. So he understands how, how things work in Massachusetts. For Dr. Haynes, I don't think I would have that much concern. It might be different if it was, if it was someone coming from, I don't know, from Florida, from, from like states that really organize their education in vastly different ways with like huge regionalized, you know, massive districts, and it's just a completely different animal. But kind of the new, the New England states are all kind of similar in that you basically, you have some regionalization, but, but not nearly to that extent, that, that it's sort of of a similar scale, even if you're in, for example, a larger district like Nashua or, you know, or in Methuen, that, that they're kind of still organized in similar ways. And so, I mean, there's no doubt there would be something, it can't be identical. So with experience in Connecticut and New Hampshire, it wouldn't be identical. But I don't think that's something that would be like of concern. That, you know, that those, they would be familiar enough and the details I don't think would be, would be that hard to, you know, to, to become conversant in. More broadly though, I, I think I do want to address, at least sort of frame a little bit, addressing some of Mr. Turner's comments about kind of this issue about getting up to speed. So obviously, any new superintendent is going to have to get up to speed with Wilmington. And they all talked about that. We had a question about your first 30 days, your first six months. And everyone understands that they need to understand the lay of the land in Wilmington, that they need to get to know the stakeholders and they need to understand the initiatives. And you need to, you know, that's the whole entry plan, that it takes like a deep dive before you really, you know, get to know a district and get a feel for, for the people in it and, and where it's going. And so there's a question, just like, so everyone's going to have to do that. But we do have two candidates who have not been superintendents before. They've obviously observed superintendents, they're part of central leadership, but have not actually done the job. And so it's fair to say that they would need some additional experience and mentoring to fully, become fully formed superintendents. But I think part of the question is also, in what timeframe is it, does it make the most sense to look at this? So, you know, ideally, we're hiring a superintendent for a good number of years. And so I think we, you know, need to think ultimately, what's going to be in the long-term benefit of Wilmington? And I don't, and that's not at all to, to put aside Mr. Turner's comment, which is very true about that we've had an interim this year. But I don't feel that we've been stagnant. I don't feel, I don't think our district is standing still this year because we have an interim superintendent. We have a pretty clearly articulated strategic plan that we have been executing on. We are continuing to execute on that. We have a lot of initiatives that are still moving and going forward. So I'm, I'm less concerned by, by that idea that just like, oh, but now we're making no progress and we don't want to have to wait again for someone else to kind of learn the superintendent role before we can make progress. Again, I, I, I think that we are still able to make progress and that the most important consideration is basically just who's going to be the, the long-term best fit for Wilmington and, and put our district in the best, you know, ultimate position.
That's a good point. And I would just, I, I think one point that I would sort of piggyback on that and something that weighed on my consideration is, you know, sort of this idea that we, we all know in this room, right? We're gonna, we are going to work closely with whoever this person is. And that's why I feel like it's important to note, yes, any one of the, the three is qualified and capable and would be a great candidate. But we also, you know, went through this entire process. We got a lot of sort of survey data feedback from the community, from teachers, from building leaders, from the central office folks. And talking about, you know, this idea of whoever is the superintendent is going to have to be brought up to speed. I know that I'm gonna, we are gonna work with this person, but I put a lot of faith in what the principals and the teachers and the, and the central office staff are telling us. And so that's kind of what helps position the two that I have is those survey results, I think, showed from those groups a, a, a clear favorite, or at least a clear, two clear favorites. So, but Dr. McCauley, you?
Yeah, so want to just address some of the feedback I got, so thanks. So I guess I'll start with Dr. Bryson. One thing you brought about was kind of hearing about the different perspectives. And I think that's why I liked Dr. Haynes, was that she has the experience in Connecticut and New Hampshire, can bring some of those ideas here, you know? And I think having that kind of like diversity of experience can be very value added. You know, there could be a way where if you're always in one place the whole time, you kind of get ingrained in that certain thinking. It can be hard to adjust and be flexible. I think Mr. Poska also follows that too. And I was the only one who didn't give a number two, because I didn't know, doing that. Mr. Poska would be my number two, just for everyone is aware.
Thanks, Mike.
No problem. So, you know, and then I appreciate what Mr. Ragsdale said also around kind of getting up to speed, that like anyone I think is going to do that. One comment I would like to make was during a reference call I had for Dr. Haynes, was actually someone that works with her currently in the, you know, the administrative office in Portsmouth. And she said that she, she's basically doing everything day-to-day in that district, like all the day-to-day operations she is running in right now. So that's someone who's kind of getting that on-the-job experience. You know, Portsmouth is a different district than Wilmington, a little more city, more, more suburban. But, you know, she does have that experience. So I think that's someone that when they do come in, there will be some kind of adjustment period. But she kind of has that experience knowing what the job's going to be. And then she can step into that role pretty effectively. At least was the thought I had.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, you're quiet. I know you're typing. Do you have any additional thoughts?
Still trying to parallel process. Thank you, and so I appreciate you asking. I do, I do certainly hear what you're saying. And, and part of what we know we can rely on with our central office staff and our district leadership staff is, is their, their knowledge and their, their abilities are tremendous and will support whomever we, we do hire. And so that does give, in some ways that goes, we've got a good pool of candidates and we've got a really good group that's going to work with them. So I'm not, a, a, any of the answers we come to today, even, any of the answers we come to today, I'm, I'm comfortable that we will get to a good place for Wilmington in the coming years. And, and, and to your point, Mr. Ragsdale, the, I, I, I do think I would probably have this conversation slightly differently if we were, if, if Dr. Brand had been able to give his notes a little bit earlier and we were sitting in this spot a year ago. I, I, I think that, that would impact me. But, but certainly I, I'm probably being a bit too cautious with it. And I acknowledge that. But I, I, I think you're, you're right that ideally, we, we are doing what we're doing this year and then there's, there is a transition period for any of them, but three years after. I mean, I don't think any of us really focus right now on Dr. Brand's entry plan. And we certainly weren't talking about it four years ago. He, he might have had it in the back of his mind still, and it might have informed some of the things that he was doing even up to that point in time. But practically speaking, the entry plan helps you get through the first year or two, and then you're fully running, and to your point, Mr. Ragsdale, you're, you're going through the process of becoming an established superintendent. And that does take some time and some guidance. And I, I think we need to take for granted that, that each of the three would need different support. And that's part of what we're going to have as a responsibility, is somebody who's really seasoned, to your point, experience isn't always, isn't always good, because sometimes bad experiences happen. And so with somebody who's very, very experienced, we will want to encourage, you know, really rely and trust on the people we have here who do know. And, and give them the benefit of all the doubt when they say something before you start to form your own opinions. On the other hand, with the newer, potentially newer superintendents, there's a, a lot we would need to do with the topics they've had less experience with. Certainly, I spoke with the COO in Nashua, who's their, their head of finance, and she had a lot of very good things to say about Mr. Poska and the budget side. His portion of the budget is really pretty small. But she also talked about how good he was with grants. And so clearly, I think there's an ability and capacity to learn it. It appeared from what we understand that, that, that Dr. Haynes has more, a little bit more budget experience, but she's also got some things to learn from. On the other hand, we know we've had Paul working with, with Kerry to, to really keep us on the steady course with our finance department. So how big a concern is that? I mean, clearly, Dr. Kwong, good, bad, and ugly, all three for sure in Methuen with the budget cycle. You know, everything from, from a, a very large budget and working through a collaborative process, but also the challenges of where that city runs itself and having to make cuts at times. So I, I, I think I'd take your point pretty strongly, Mr. Ragsdale, that, that for sure, there is a transition with any of them and each of them will, we will need to support as a group and the district will need to support as a group to help them, help us get to where we want to go.
Yeah, oh, it sounded like you were getting ready to.
Well, I was actually scratching my head, but then we made eye contact with one of those. So, you know, I, I think we had at some point during this discussion talked about kind of our role with these folks, and I think Mr. Turner was talking about it too. Maybe we should be looking at this through the lens of who, if we believe all these people are really capable, and I think we do, who do we think is best, who could we help the best? Right? Who could we provide the right goals to and the right evaluations to and hone them? Who's the most honable to the tool to reach our goals? Right? Who's the most, like if we could really encourage them and, and put them in that direction? That could be a lens that could help us get some progress.
I would reframe that slightly. I think you're, I think you're right. And I, I'll bring us back to when we did the interim superintendent search in the spring. We framed that conversation very specifically around, these folks are all qualified, who is the right fit for Wilmington right now? And I think that's, I, I still think we come back to that, right? None of the three are, are a bad choice, right? We're going to get an accomplished leader, no matter who. What we need to come to is who is the best fit for us right now?
Then I guess one A to that from my part is, you know, one of the things that's been of interest is this, that we talk about experience and the way in which everyone's again capable of doing, doing this job. I'm, I'm kind of interested in this idea of the positive of being new to being a superintendent, kind of like the, the excitement and the passion that comes with try, doing it for the first time. There are benefits to having done it in the state before at great length, of course. And I, Dr. Kwong is my top two, so I give that credit. But at the same time, I'm very appealed to by the, the person who, this is their first swing of the bat, it being superintendent, and what that means for their energy and their kind of drive and their kind of, all of those kind of important intangibles. So, you know, I, when I think of where the district's at and where we want to go, I think of really wanting to turbocharge the energy that we've got and, and just reach as high as we can. So that's why I think someone who, not necessarily bad that someone hasn't been a superintendent before, I think you can actually have a positive from it, so.
And I think, not to necessarily put words in Mr. Turner's mouth, but that sort of, was it you, Stephen, I'm sorry, that said this sort of like fresh ideas? You don't necessarily kind of get into this mindset of like, well, this is how I've always done things, that kind of.
Sure, yeah, right. Just because someone's been somewhere for a while does not mean they are incapable of, right, exactly.
Certainly. I'm trying to let you guys drive this conversation. I feel like it has to be me, but I'm trying to let you guys like organically sort of feed off of one another. I think at some point, my hope is at some point this evening, we get to where we have maybe a shortlist of two. But we are, this is, it, it's very close. Like there's a, there's support for all three of these candidates.
I mean, if we were to, just not even advocating one way or the other, but just to go over everyone's top two, am I, we're calling correctly that only one person didn't have Dr. Kwong in their top two?
So at, at, by my count, there are essentially five votes for Dr. Kwong and Mr. Poska and four for Dr. Haynes.
Okay. Is that the right number, seventeen, fourteen?
And I know you got a hold count, is that what you have too?
I think five of us have Dr. Kwong on the, on their top two.
Yep.
And I have one, two, four, four with Poska. Stephen, did you give a top two? I think I only have.
Dr. Kwong and.
Dr. Kwong is the only.
And, and, and Mr. Poska.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's where I got my, Dr. McCauley?
Yeah, I think something I could suggest is for everyone who was on the fence with two and didn't have a strong one, are there any lingering questions you may have for everyone else to make you choose a one? And then maybe we can do like a straw poll, like everyone puts out their one and then we see where that shakes out. How does that sound?
I think that sounds good, and I think our M A S E friends are indicating that that sounds like a solid path forward.
Can we, can we, yeah, let's, can, can you say that again, just talking?
Sure, no problem. So from the beginning?
No, no, just the last bit, just the very last bit. Yeah, from the very start, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we'll, for anyone who couldn't make a decision between two, please ask questions now, so then you can make a decision to recommend one. And then we'll do a vote on who's everyone's top choice. We'll add it up and then we'll see who's the top two after that. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay, rank choice voting.
Dr. Bryson?
I will say, I mean, I think it's tricky in this situation, so I think that's a great idea. And for people watching and for us sitting here, this is a very difficult spot to be in, because one of these three will be our super, right? And so it's sort of trying. So I know it must be odd for people kind of tuning in about how we're discussing this, but it is a very sort of fragile, sensitive discussion for us to have, because we want to make sure whatever we are saying is going to be supportive of who that person is. And so if it looks like we're all a little bit tentative, I wouldn't say it's sort of a tentative thing. I think it's a, a cautious, careful thing, because this is a very important discussion. And we're the only ones who have all the information.
Yeah, right.
So I think that we have, we've done all of the pieces, right? We did the interview, we did the, some of the focus groups. We've seen the feedback, not once but twice, right? We've had people reaching out to us, we've received emails. So there's no one watching who sees that. And so I think that it's important for people to understand that we're, we're cautious because we do need to be careful what is said, because I'm certain candidates and fans are watching, right? And we do want to be really thoughtful about anything that gets said in here, that it is something that we can stand by and live by, knowing that it might not be our number one choice who winds up getting that position. And that's okay, because we're going to be, we're going to be comfortable with our, with our two.
Sure. So.
So with that, would you like me, I mean, I'm happy.
Sure.
Yeah.
You want to just go back in the order we went?
It would be, is there any questions anyone who's on the fence still has right now? Or does everyone feel that they have a number one choice? And if you don't have a number one choice, are there any questions you may want to ask to help clarify or process your thoughts?
I like this running the meeting by committee thing.
Sorry. It was my idea, so.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Golden.
So we delegated this part to run the straw poll.
So, so I definitely came into tonight's meeting, again, as I said, respectfully torn between two great candidates. You know, the kind of, having done it before versus not having done it before and what I already just said last about what that might entail. The hard part is I have, I feel so, I, I wish I had had a better single question I could ask with respect to the candidates applying, because they deserve me having a question to ask that would help decide between the two. I've had a hard time figuring that out. But I think at the end of the day, if you had to force me to pick, I'd pick Dr. Haynes right now as my number one. But I invite anyone to ask me a leading Socratic question to get me to a more secure place. But we can also skip that.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Did you want to go?
I don't have, well, I'm following Mr. McCauley, Dr. McCauley, so no. I'm going to wait until he moves us onto that next piece.
Yeah.
Chair.
Are there any other questions or thoughts from anyone before we go with our recommend, our top recommendation?
I'm not there yet.
How can we help you?
I'm trying to figure out what the question is that I need to ask.
Okay, give me some time.
It's could be a few minutes then. Do you want to sing or dance? Do you want to sing or dance?
I don't know if people, if people did go back to the strategic plan, but I think if you haven't reviewed that, in light of this, that might be another helpful place just to refresh. And basically looking through those objectives, when, the anticipated completion date, and who's responsible, I think can be very useful, as we start to think about what we're calling fit. What you're saying is fit for the district.
Yeah. I guess, I guess the, the question I would ask of all three, your views on all three candidates, because I clearly come to a certain point on this topic, but when we got to question four, where we talked about the building project, and we focused on the three pieces of it, there's the, the piece of during, during the construction project, how do you work with students, families, and staff through the change? And how to prepare them for the change, excuse me? How do you keep education at the forefront of the decision-making during the design and construction phases? Because there are decisions will be made that affect education in that piece. And then how do you minimize the strain on North intermediate school? When I looked through the answers, what I, let me double check here what I'm saying, I found that, let's see, sorry. I found that Dr. Kwong and Dr. Haynes did, and maybe it was just the fact that it was a stupidly long question that I raised, got to all the pieces and certainly talked through how they would handle it. I, I thought that the focus Dr. Kwong had on communication was what stood out to me most, just that, that the rigor of communication and the variability of communication, and that it's a two-way communication, was part of what impressed me on that particular question. And, and when I talked about the five things I thought of that were what I was looking for, because I reviewed the, the app, the whole process, that, that when I kind of mentally checklisted all three candidates against the five topics, that was one of the ones where Dr. Kwong's approach struck me as being the most thorough and the most complete. Again, by the time we get there, we can help whoever is the superintendent. Again, to all the point everyone's made, we're going to help them, we're going to work with them, all the other building leaders, our town leaders, who have been fantastic partners on the project are going to help. But in terms of out of, out of the starting gate, that was one of the five things that, and so I'm curious how you guys feel about the other two candidates who have had experience, but less experience with building projects? What's, what your level of comfort is with either of them or both of them on that particular topic? Mr. Exel, you can start.
Sure, I can address that. I, I felt very comfortable with, with both Dr. Haynes and Mr. Poska's responses on that building project question. I think that Dr. Haynes, I mentioned this a little bit in my initial comments, but that she, from having been the teacher on that project that she worked on in Connecticut, really understood just a lot of the issues and questions that the, part of that building committee had had to deal with, just a lot of the issues that our building committee has had to think about, you know, teaching, keeping everything educationally focused, making sure that everything is in, in service of the kids, and just all the different sides of communication. She talked about the importance of, you know, really planning and making sure that every, every phase of the project, that there, you're asking the right questions. I think Mr. Poska also had a very strong answer. He talked about making sure that the right people are at the table. He'd done a project in Beverly when they had consolidated the middle school, and had really focused on that the teachers have to prepare to teach differently in the new building. Like, he had an anecdote about one of the teachers who finally kind of said, it was like, "We're all sick of you saying that we have to figure out what we're going to do differently in the new building," but it's like, "I finally get it," that you can't just pick up your classroom and trans, you know, transfer it and just lift it up and drop it into the new building, that, you know, the way the building works is going to change, and the way that the school operates is going to change, the way the teachers teach is going to change. And so I think that they, they both had, you know, again, while not having led a project through, from soup to nuts, although Dr. Kwong has also not led a construction project through from soup to nuts. But I thought that they had also, you know, strong perspectives on what was necessary to successfully complete the building project.
Okay, thank you. I feel like several times I've...
Sorry.
It's okay.
It's all right. I feel like several times I've piggybacked on Mr. Exel's comments, but I'm going to again. I, I, I agree overall with the assessment, and, and one of the things that I recall specifically writing down about Mr. Poska's was response was that he spoke directly to addressing and engaging the abutters, which I appreciated, because I know we've been doing that, and I know it's going to continue to happen. That said, one of the references that I did was for Mr. Poska, and the references, the current superintendent in Danvers was the assistant principal of Beverly High School when Mr. Poska was the principal of Beverly Middle School. And so, he had some real, real solid insight into Mr. Poska's approach to sort of that alignment with the new middle school, and talked about how he kind of worked upwards to the high school and down to the, to the elementary levels to sort of prepare families and staff as well, right? Because you're getting a new high school, you're consolidating, you're bringing both sides of town together, those folks are then going to go up to the high school, and so it was this really sort of insightful comment on how he approached that integration process. And he was a parent of middle school students at the time, and, and really spoke highly about his sort of engagement with families during that process. So I think that is something we're going to, we're going to need, right? We're building a new school, we're combining three of them, it's going to be really important that we continue to engage folks. So, while I, I appreciate that everybody had strong answers to that, there was just some, it's, it's tough, because this, all this insight comes after the fact, right? But I thought some of what I learned about his approach to that process, that kind of helped push me in that direction. Dr. Bryson?
So, yes and yes, and, so I'm not going to repeat, but I will say the other thing, and they're, they all had the same communication, 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 like a cross, right? The difference was, Dr. Kwong had a lot of specificity, right? She talked about exits, entrances, mapping, making sure people knew children were on that site. So it was like very specific in sort of how she would kind of go through this. And Mr. Poska also did some of that, but again, was sort of more of a bigger, like a bigger idea picture, and he was the only one that talked really about teaching and learning. And I have here maximize teaching and learning, and I was like, so this idea that you're going to be really focusing on the teaching and learning during this time, to me, sort of, I guess, was different than what I had read. And I did like Dr. Haynes sort of talking about using it as an experience, so I understand that piece, I see why, I see why my colleagues are like, liking that, because I agree. But I, and, not but, and, I think his focus on that was important, he said, like, changing the mindset, like, sort of like not thinking about it in this deficit, like, "Oh, look what's happening to us," but how can we now think through our teaching and learning? And that really kind of stood out to me, is a, sort of as a standout answer for number four. And they all had everything else I would have expected to see, if that makes sense. Does that help?
Yes. Ms. Lord?
Tag on a little bit, you know, I think all three strike me as very capable of being able to navigate, you know, the building project. Well, it's just interesting, because I think we all come with this, with a different lens. For me, I'm, I'm thinking of the inner daily workings of what it's like to be a teacher in a school on an ongoing basis. So, the things that were catching my attention were more about the instructional leadership and the curriculum, and supporting teachers and students, and all those different things that are an ongoing core of education. So on those two topics, that's where, you know, the two candidates that I, that felt stronger, stronger to me. So it's, you know, there's a lot of things to, to consider, that's where my mind is more so going.
Thank you.
Well, it's so interesting, and I guess part of me is thinking, my building leader is going to be doing quite a bit of that, the detail piece, under the support of the superintendent, but the superintendent, while being very involved in that, you're not agreeing with me, but I feel like, I'm, I'm almost like, I feel like we're, for me, it's like a, yes, it's what the superintendent is doing, but the building leader is actually the one doing many of these things in Dr. Kwong's answer. And I guess that's where I'm sort of like, yes, but is, am I putting that in the right space? Whereas, my superintendent is overseeing it, but not on site, occasion, I mean, not never on site. Like, of course they're going to be on site, and probably at that site more than some of the other sites at the time, but, so I, so that's where I'm a little like, oh, I think that's why having this conversation, why leaning toward, like maximizing teaching and learning, kind of sticks with me, as opposed to the, the details of the, the exits and the entrances and the mapping, and I'm like, okay, yes, but I actually am looking for something a little bit bigger than that, I guess. Does that help?
It is, but it's interesting, because I, I was, I, I actually heard her answer the opposite direction, that she was very, very focused on, because it's such an important project, that it would be something she'd spend a lot of time on, which gave me some comfort, because part of the, in, the added layer there is we will be transitioning to a new principal there in the fall, because we have an interim now, and so that principal will need not just the normal mentoring, welcome to the district, all the things of being a new principal in the district, but being the principal in the building that's being actively impacted could require a great deal of support from the superintendent. As layers, that, 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 yes, they're focused on the day-to-day operation of the building that's being dramatically impacted, they would need, I would believe, the assistance of the central office on things like the communication, in part because the communication's to three buildings, three fam, three family groups, but in part because they may be still getting their own feet under them during the, it's pretty, the first year of their, their time, when the, the construction would actually be starting. So I, I, I'm curious, and maybe I misheard parts of what, what Dr. Kwong said there, or maybe, because I, I, I thought, I, I took it as more of, you know, because it's a multi-building project, it is a central office leadership piece? May I? Dr. Bryson?
Yes, but during the construction, impacted right away is North.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, yeah, so I totally agree with you, the communication, three building, absolutely, and I think the communication plan will have to be centralized, absolutely. But there's things that are going to be happening on a day-to-day basis with the North four, five in that moment, that will not affect Wilburn Street.
No pressure.
Or Wildwood at that time. So I feel like this is going to change over time, right? Because as we start to move families in, it's a little bit different. But when we start construction, it's still that four, five. And so, yes, while that principal's going to need a ton of support from central office and from the superintendent, I still think some of this is very much sort of the, the day-to-day workings of that. But, but I hear you.
Okay. Mr. Exel?
Something else that I want to add that hasn't, hasn't come up. One thing that we mentioned about Mr. Poska, when kind of like thinking about him and Dr. Haynes, is that he has Massachusetts experience that she currently doesn't. But one thing that, that I think is also worth pointing out is that Dr. Haynes, and of course, Dr. Kwong is running an entire district, has experience at the elementary level, which Mr. Poska largely lacks, that he's been, you know, middle school, high school, secondary in Nashua, so that he's, you know, largely has secondary experience, and not as much experience at the elementary level, and that that's, you know, an important, obviously an important part of any district, and something that's also worth bringing up.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any other questions for their colleagues? So, the suggestion was essentially identify your top choices, see if there's a clear favorite, or if there's, you know...
A top two, or something like that, and then we can do another round.
All right.
Sure.
Well, in that case, let's go back in the same order we went.
Sure. I, I will still go with Dr. Haynes.
Thank you.
And mine was to be Dr. Kwong.
I'm going to go with Dr. Haynes.
Mr. Exel?
I'm going to go with Mr. Poska.
Mr. Turner?
Dr. Kwong.
Dr. Bryson?
Uh, Mr. Poska.
I am also going to go with Mr. Poska. So that gives us three, two, two.
So, if I may.
You may.
Now, what I would suggest is, my MAS C person's okay with that, whoever voted for Dr. Kwong or Dr. Haynes, would they then give support to Mr. Poska? How does that sound?
That is fine, because you only need to elect by a simple majority.
Great. So, in that case, for those who have identified either Dr. Haynes or Dr. Kwong as their top choice, is there, I guess, sort of, not quite reconsideration, but reconsideration for Mr. Poska? Yes. Okay, so that, that's one from Mr. Turner. Thank you. Dr. McCauley?
I can support Mr. Poska.
It's a little, excuse me, a little tricky, because my, it definitely felt like my strong second was Dr. Haynes. Regardless, I think any of them would be good candidates and would fully support them as school committee, you know, in terms of voting, it's a little, I'm not sure.
That's fair. Mr. Golden? I can't see you over there, but...
Yeah. I think I'm going to stick to my no.
So, we are currently at five, essentially five, one, one. So with that, I would be willing to entertain a motion that would read, a move that Mr. Matthew Poska be appointed superintendent of schools for Wilmington, subject to the successful negotiation of a contract of employment mutually agreeable to the conditions and the school committee, and signed by both parties of their designees. Did I get that right? Would anyone, Dr. Bryson will make the motion.
No, I will not make the motion.
No, sorry.
I actually have a question for Alicia.
Please.
Do you want to come join us?
Sure.
Thanks.
Come on down.
Oh, my goodness.
Um, thank you.
It really is like phone a friend.
It is, I phoned you. I am very concerned with there not being consensus. So I'm wondering what other steps we could take to sort of, like, what, what might happen next? So if we decide that we'd really like to be in a space where people are, are fully supportive, what else might we want to do? Such as, do people need more information? Should we think about site visits? I mean, does that, does that make sense to sort of think about what other things could we do to potentially think more deeply about this?
So I would say, if you were completely deadlocked, if there was no motion whatsoever, if you were not sitting at 115, then yes, I would say maybe there's more things to talk about as far as gathering information. I think your better bet at this point, because you do now have 115, is to talk about what it looks like when the new superintendent comes in. We, there were many people were mentioning needing support, needing to get up to speed. Anyone who has not been a superintendent in Massachusetts gets, they will get a call, if this is the way you go, they will get a call from you tonight, and they will get a call from Mary Burke or Chris McGrath first thing tomorrow morning. They usually know right away. Go ahead.
Who are those folks?
Those are some of the former superintendents who are on the Board of Directors for Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. So the MAS S is the superintendent version of us. And they will get a call right away. We recommend to all of our districts that when you're talking about bringing someone on board, that you ask them, you tell them, "We want you to be part of the new superintendent induction program," which is the NSIP program. That will give them a mentor, a cohort, it will give them meetings with their cohorts, individual meetings with their mentor, they will help them develop a, an entry plan, et cetera. So, that, I think, talking about requiring something like that, and then maybe talking about what other things the people who did not want to move to the unanimous category feel like they would need to see. There's lots of, there's a runway here. If you make a vote tonight, which it looks like you're going to, if you make a vote tonight, you have the rest of this school year and all of the summer. So you can talk about, maybe you ask the candidate to come in and have some meetings with you all, maybe you ask the candidate to, as part of their... Maybe you ask the candidate to, as part of their approach with the NSIT program, have them come in and maybe come in with their mentor. We can do a workshop over the summer with you, where we go over roles and responsibilities, like a charting the course light, where we review roles and responsibilities and operating protocols and sort of, you know, open meeting law and how things work, which may also alleviate a little bit of the, are they ready for Massachusetts? I will say that all three of your candidates, including the two who are not currently superintendents, have superintendent certification in Massachusetts. None of them are pending or anything like that. So we could, I think, it looks like you're headed towards a majority. We, I think at this point, can talk about, what does it look like to make sure that that person is successful? I will also say, you don't have to be unanimous. It is not uncommon for the vote not to be unanimous. And that's okay too, because that's information for the incoming superintendent, that tells them that there's things that they need to work on too. And it gives you information about what you want them to work on, what you need to do to help support them. It's not the end of the world to not be unanimous. A lot of committees like to do it because it feels good, you don't have to. Information is communication, so.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Mr. Raggsell?
I don't have a concern about not being unanimous. I think that we have been, I don't think we could have been clearer that we think all three of these candidates are great. That's why we've spent so much time going back and forth, kind of, you know, divided, divided between them. And so I, I think that we have made clear enough that, you know, we think these are all great candidates, and that the one being chosen for not being unanimous shows to me no lack of support or belief in the quality of the candidate. And I, I wouldn't want to be in a position where we're now going to basically Nick and Becky, what is it gonna take to get you?
Not looking for more.
Yeah, what is it gonna take you to, you know-
We're not gonna arm wrestle here tonight, people. We're just, we're not.
Yeah.
There just seems no, there just seems no need for that. And so I would be, I would be comfortable just voting, and everyone voting as they've indicated that they're, they are comfortable.
I appreciate that insight.
I have a question, which may make this harder, but, you know, all three candidates, quality, right, I would fully support, whoever the committee chooses, right, I will fully support, as I admit, I will want them to be successful. For me, I'm going on my, what is most important to me in education, and who gave, I feel, is the most, so that isn't gonna change based on anything, right? So I, I don't think I need convincing. I guess the one thing I'm wondering, based on how that vote went, I, my top two were close, right? My second, I would personally would choose Dr. Haynes. And if I were to do that, it would mean three of us had chosen, Dr. Haynes and three had chosen Mr. Poska. Then where does that lead us if, you know, is there, I'm, I'm curious to know what the support would be the other way around, just to make, to really know that we're making the decision that majority of the people feel the best about.
And I will say this, the reason school committees are committees and they're odd numbers, is because the majority rules. So it's okay to have dissent, it's okay to not all agree. That is the beauty of committee work, is everyone comes to the table, you talk about it, you move pieces around, and then, you know, we talk a lot in Charting the Course, which you all know, when you get to the decision that gets made, and the example I often use is budget season, no one gets to the end of budget season is like, oh my God, we have so much money, we're so, we're golden, yay! Nobody likes the end of budget season. But then as a committee, you move forward with that in the best way possible. So it's okay to not have consensus, and it's okay to say, well, we didn't have consensus, how do we move forward in the best way possible?
Other questions? Now's the time. We're still on the phone with our friend. Dr. McCallie?
At the risk of doing another, like, kind of vote, kind of what Becky was just talking about, would we want to kind of see, like, if it was between Dr. Haynes and Mr. Poska, what that would look like? Or is that gonna overcomplicate things too much?
I, based on the math I can do and where I was sitting on a position, I can tell you how that answer will go.
Four, three.
Four, three.
To Poska.
Yeah, sorry.
That's the, that's sort of informal count.
Yeah. So it, it, it's a, it's a very valid question.
Considering just to know that we did everything, yeah.
But in terms of the way I had them organized, that's how that would work out, yes.
But I would also say, that's information too. You have three great candidates, and you would be comfortable with all three, but now you know the positive qualities from the other two candidates that you may want to bring into the relationship with the candidate you choose. That's why, that's another reason why it's not necessary to be unanimous. You can take that, failure is just information on how to succeed. So when you get to that point where you decide, you can take all of that, all those things that you liked about the other candidates and say, how do we make this the best relationship for Wilmington?
And that's why I, I agree again with Mr. Raggsell's sort of not having this concern about being unanimous. I love the idea of being unanimous, but having some dissent sort of informs our conversations as we move forward to eventually develop, help develop this finalist into the best superintendent.
Yep.
For us, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Others? I would still be willing to entertain a motion, and I won't read it again. I move that Mr. Matthew Poska be appointed superintendent of schools for Wilmington, subject to the successful negotiation of a contract of employment mutually agreeable to the candidate and the school committee, and signed by both parties or their designees. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Raggsell, is there a second? Dr. Bryson, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. I'll start with Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Dr. McCallie?
Yes.
Ms. Lord?
Epstein. Can I do that right?
Mr. Golden?
No.
Okay. Mr. Raggsell?
Yes.
Dr. Bryson?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that's gonna be five yes, one no, one abstention. At this time, I would look for a motion for a brief recess.
So moved.
Second?
Mike.
Dr. McCallie? All those in favor? Unanimous. We'll be back shortly. All right. Thank you, apologies. We're back from a brief recess. Happy to report that I spoke with Mr. Poska. He has accepted and agreed to enter into negotiations to be our next superintendent. So moving forward, we, we, the committee, the school committee, or the negotiating subcommittee that we will appoint, will, you know, speak with council, develop a contract, we'll engage with Mr. Poska and negotiate the contract, with the hope of having it done as soon as we can. Certainly, you know, we know that the Thanksgiving holiday may make things a little bit challenging. My hope will be to have at least some update to the committee at our next regular meeting. That said, I think that's about the extent of it. Mr. Turner, I think you have a question. I am gonna ask if, if the committee will appoint a negotiating subcommittee this evening, because while we may not do any actual negotiating over the Thanksgiving break, I think having that, that group formed, so we can start even the conversations with MASC and the contract, I think makes a lot of sense. So, Mr. Turner, I'm sorry, I talked to you.
So, no, that's where I would like to go. I'd like to suggest, if, if the folks I'm naming are so inclined, I would like to suggest yourself and Dr. Bryson, and also Mr. Dr. McCallie, the logic being the two of you, chair and vice chair, but also have done this with the interim last year. Dr. McCallie, both as a member of the budget subcommittee, but also with his extensive experience in private sector negotiating individual contracts, I think would be really invaluable to that process as well.
Sure. I am, I'm happy to do so.
I'm happy to do so, and that's a great suggestion, so thank you for that. Are you happy to do so?
No, yeah, and thank you for the nomination too. Flattered.
I think that will be very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, happy work the eyes.
All right, then, I'll make that as a formal-
I was gonna say, can I consider that a made motion? All right, motion?
I, I move to appoint Mr. Fennelly, Dr. Bryson, and Dr. McCallie to the negotiating subcommittee.
Second. Okay, we'll give Mr. Turner that second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
I can vote for myself. Yeah, okay.
Unanimous. All right. Phone a friend, do we need to do anything else to set us up before we leave here tonight?
No, you are good to go.
With that, I'm gonna say thank you again to everybody that we mentioned earlier. I'm gonna wish everybody a safe, happy Thanksgiving holiday. Our students get a half-day tomorrow, I know mine are particularly excited. But I won't be labor this any longer.
I do want to say thank you to the school committee.
Yeah, please.
That's hard, that's hard to do. So I think, and Ms. Mallon said it perfectly, that this is the kind of discussion she would send on to others about how to have this discussion. So I think we should all feel really proud of the work we did to get to where we are and to have this discussion in such a collegial way, with evidence and data to support what we were all thinking. And I think that it just, again, shows how, how thoughtful and how lucky we are to have such a strong committee leading this, leading this charge. So thank you. I know, I'm sure, I know how I was feeling all day, so I can only imagine how everyone else is feeling. This is not, this is not easy. And many people will joke about it. I'm glad I don't have to do it, you, I mean, it is, it is not easy. And so for, for town volunteers, seriously, thank you from, from the bottom of our hearts. I hope I say that for all of Wilmington, that this is, it's a pretty remarkable space to sit in to, to witness something like this, so.
Yeah. We often joke with each other about how, how good this committee is, but really, I think it's another example of just how true that is, so, thank you.
And I think I'd also, just one, one final thank you to the three candidates.
Yes.
Who spend so much time with us and put themselves forward.
With that, there is a motion and a second, no, there isn't, I need a motion to adjourn. Dr. Bryson, second, Dr. McCallie, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Good night, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.